Good evening and welcome to the 1,181st Regular Meeting and Public Hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council, and City Council after holding their own public hearing will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission will hold the only public hearing on request for preliminary Platts and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition is requesting a waiver of use or a site plan and is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Miley is absent. Mrs. McHugh is absent. Mr. Bonjero absent. Mr. Long here. Mr. Ventura?
Is here.
Karen Magna was here. Chairman Rochelle?
Is here. And also with us tonight, we have Scott Miller and Stephanie Reese from our Planning Department. For the folks in our audience, just to explain how the format of this meeting works, we're going to start by reading out each of the agenda items that's on the agenda. There's one in the back if you wish to grab one. Our planning staff will give background information on each of these items to us, and then we'll ask for the petitioner to come forward and speak to the item. We'll have some questions for them, and we'll also have an opportunity for anyone in the audience who wishes to speak for or against any of these petitions to also come forward and speak to us with their comments. Once we hear all comments, then we will make our decision as to approving or denying these petitions. So with that, if our secretary is ready, we're going to begin with item number one on the public hearing section of our agenda.
Petition 2021-10-01-07 submitted by Kasim Bazi pursuant to Sections 13.13 and 13.15 of Livonia Vision 21 Zoning Ordinance, requesting to rezone the property at 274805 Mile Road, located on the north side of 5 Mile Road between Inxter Road and Fosh Avenue in the southeast corridor of Section 13 from NM1 Neighborhood Multifamily to NM2 Neighborhood Multifamily Maximum Stories 4.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Miller?
This property is located on the north side of 5 Mile between Fosh and Green Lane Avenue. It is 1.6 acres in size. The current condition right now, it is vacant. Surrounding the property, you have NM1, which is a neighborhood residential to the north. To the east and west, you have commercial that is zoned C1, which is local business. And across the street to the south on 5 Mile Road, you have N1 and N2, which are both residential. NM2 zoning treats multiple dwellings and apartments as a permitted use, subject to review and approval by the Planning Commission and the City Council. This zoning also allows buildings up to four stories in height. The preliminary plan for the development shows two buildings and a clubhouse. Each building would contain six two-bedroom units for a total of 12 units. The buildings would be three levels in height. On the north side of the site, you would have a 2,040-square-foot, one-story clubhouse and an outdoor pool area. Parking for this type of development and the number of units, it would require 24 parking spaces. The site plan shows 43 parking spaces. The future land use map shows this as medium-density residential, which is suitable for this type of development, and that's the extent of the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Do you have correspondence?
Yes, I do. We have a correspondence from the Office of City Treasurer. Says, "In accordance with your request, the Treasurer's Office has reviewed the name and address connected with this above noted petition. At this time, there are no taxes due, but they are not delinqu- there are taxes due, but they are not delinquent. Therefore, I have no objections to proposal." Letter from Department of Finance. "I have reviewed the address connected with the above noted petition. As there are no outstanding amounts receivable, general or water or sewer, I have no objections to proposal," and that is signed by Connie Complah, City Chief Accountant. And then from the Department of Engineering. "In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to proposal rezoning at this time. The subject parcel is assigned an address of 274805 Mile Road. The existing parcel currently has access to public water main and sanitary sewer owned by the City of Livonia. Storm sewer owned by Wayne County is available within the 5 Mile right-of-way, so that any connection will require a permit through the county. The developer will need to meet current engineering requirements for the proposed project, including stormwater detention for the latest version of the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance. It should be noted that the developer will be required to obtain a permit through the Wayne County Department of Public Service for any work within the 5 Mile right-of-way, and that is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer." That's the extent of the correspondence.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Miller. With that, I will now go to our petitioner or representative for our petitioner who's in the audience. You're welcome to come forward to one of our podiums. We'll ask that you start with your name and address for our record.
Hello, my name is Mohammed Bazi. Address is 6347 Appleline, Dearborn, Michigan, 48126.
Thank you, sir. And you're representing our petitioner tonight. Is there any additional information that you'd like to provide?
We're actually just trying to change it from NM1 to NM2 for one specific reason. We're trying to put the garage on the lower level, so it'll actually be just a two-and-a-half story, which we could put in writing. It is already approved for a two-story. So all we need is, we wanted to put the garage on the bottom floor, which would make it two-and-a-half stories, and that's about it. I mean, everything else is intact unless anybody else has questions. I'll be more than happy to answer them to my best ability. My father was supposed to be here. He caught COVID, and the architect, actually, is not here. So I would be more than happy to answer any questions to my best of my ability.
No, we appreciate that, Mr. Bazi. What we'll do is start with any questions from any of our commissioners on this property and this petition, and then we'll hear from our audience members. Anyone on the Commission wishing to ask any questions of our petitioner? Mr. Ventura?
Good evening, Mr. Bazi. I'm trying to understand your reasoning when you say that where you're putting the garage on the main floor on the first story is only a half a story. Are you putting it partially underground?
Lower. It's going to be lower level. It's going to be dug like a condominium. I don't know if you, Mr. Actually, John said that there's somewhat of similar condominiums over Bell Creek condos?
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with that. So you're telling me that the garage, you're going to drive down into the below grade in the garage?
It'll be not all the way dug underground, no. It'll be, the way he explained it is it'll be two-and-a-half stories in regards to...
Okay, all right. All right, I understand your answer to that. Thank you. I also see that the planning staff recommended a couple of modifications to the site plan. Number one, that the, I guess, number one, that the project be limited to two stories. Number two, that the buildings be moved closer to 5 Mile Road. And number three, that the pool house on the site that you're planning to put on the site be changed in orientation from going from east to west, if you will, to north to south, so that it's not as close to the neighbors as it is now.
Which shouldn't get a problem.
Can you tell us why you have not done those things?
Well, one, Mr., I talked to John, and he said he's working on that because the neighbors were saying that they don't want a pool. They just, they wanted trees and whatnot, so, I mean, in regards to that, I can make it, we can actually discuss and go further into making it a park or just a complete, just grass and trees. We have no problem with that. But what was your other concern, the first one?
Staff recommended that the buildings be moved closer to 5 Mile Road.
Which will eliminate the parking in the front, correct?
I believe that was the...
That's why, that's why we didn't want to do that, because it's eliminating the parking up front, and it wouldn't look the same. Side-by-side, buildings on the side-by-side would look a lot better and more convenient for the garages in regards to where you're going to have a garage facing 5 Mile.
Okay. And I guess my last question would be, why do you have so much parking on the site that's not required?
It's just extra parking spots, that's all.
Okay, so there's no functional reason for that?
No.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bazi. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for our petitioner? If not, I do want to point out that this is a rezoning request, and our main focus tonight is to look at the rezoning of the property from NM1 to NM2. There is going to obviously be some discussion regarding the proposed site plan because we need to understand why this change of zoning is being requested. However, the details of the site plan itself and the layout of the property, the materials used on the building, those types of details will be taken care of at a future site plan meeting if this petition proceeds forward. So I just want to at least point that out for everyone in our audience's benefit. And with that, I think it's probably, if there's no other questions from any of our commissioners, Mr. Long, did you have one?
No. There's email correspondence as well. I don't know if you want to read that?
Yeah, we did.
Send your email.
We did, yes. Thank you, Mr. Long. There is a number of letters that we have received from residents in the area that was, that will be put into our record as well. And one of those notifications that we received today that I also want to make clear in the record is that it was discovered that this property did not have a sign posted outside of it, which is part of the process that the petitioner is required to go through, is to post a sign notifying that the rezoning is being proposed for this property. So with that, I do want to at least make it clear that that was noted, and we'll continue on with our meeting at this point. Is there any other comments, questions from any of the commissioners? If not, I'm going to go to the audience and see if there's any comments that anyone in our audience would like to make on this petition, either for or against. Mr. Bazi, you can sit down for now.
Thank you.
And we'll listen to the residents who wish to speak. Good evening, sir. Again, we'll ask for your name and address for our record.
My name is Larry Siewinski, 15852 Fosh.
Okay, thank you, sir. And what would you like to say?
Well, I'd like to tell you first off, I'm a disabled vet, and I have a trouble hearing.
Okay.
Thanks to the U.S. Navy. But I'm opposed to this change because that's a nice, quiet residential neighborhood. It's all one-family homes. That apartment that you're talking about, I think will stand out like a sore thumb, and it'll bring my property values down. Next thing I need to know is, is this a federal thing that you're doing? Or is it some private guy wants to build these apartments?
This is private, sir.
It's private?
Yes.
Because I was wondering if this is a federally funded thing to house Section 8 people? I want to know if they're going to build something like that next to Obama and Martha's Vineyard?
Yes.
That's been happening all over the country to try and integrate the neighborhoods.
Right.
And I'm against that. If they build one by Obama, they can build one by me. That's the way I feel about it. My second thing is I didn't hear that whole introduction you did about how this gets passed or not passed. But I'm, the way I think, I didn't hear that whole scenario. But if we're living in a democracy, it's up to the citizens of Livonia, not appointed people or elected people to make that decision. And I think we can either take a vote of hands or put it on the ballot, because I'm sure a lot of the people feel strongly, and it should be up to people of Livonia to make that decision, not two or three people. Other than that, I don't have much to say, but I would like to have a vote in that, as I'm sure all my neighbors would, as to what goes down over here.
Well, thank you, sir, for your comments. I do want to acknowledge your service to our country and say our appreciation for that.
Thank you.
And the way the process works is we are going to make a recommendation, either approving or denying or potentially tabling this item to a future meeting. That's the three decisions that we can make. And that will, that recommendation then goes to, normally will go to City Council, and City Council ultimately is the one that makes the decision. They're the elected representatives that make these decisions.
If they're my elected representative, they should represent me and my thoughts.
Very, that's very true.
Is that how democracy works?
You are correct, sir, and that's one of the reasons why we have this public hearing, is for you to be able to participate in the process and express your views.
And the City Council's all elected people?
Correct.
So that means if they go through with it, we have the power to vote to get them out of there.
Exactly. That's exactly how that works. So what we do is we're getting your comments. We're going to factor in your comments along with all the other information that we received tonight, and we're going to try to make the best decision we can. So that's kind of what's going to happen tonight, okay?
In other words, you make the best decision you can here regardless of these people.
No, not, that's not true. We try to make the best decision what's good for the citizens, for the community, and for the property owner itself. So we try to factor in all those things.
So I guess my next question is, if they're so intent on building this in my neighborhood, there's plenty of room in Detroit to build apartment houses. I used to live there. I know what it's like. But there's lots of empty fields, lots. There's plenty of places there to build apartments. And we do have apartments down on 5 Mile close to Middleville. So if they're looking for a big place to build a lot of apartments, go East of Telegraph. You'll find it.
Okay. We appreciate that.
Okay with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against this development? If so, feel free to come forward.
Hi, my name is Cheryl St. Jean. I'm speaking for my 98-year-old mother. She lives at 15458 Fosh. I live at 15524 Fosh. We have three houses in this, on the street.
Excellent.
Our family. My home, I have water in the back part of my property already, and there are four actual houses, two on the right side of me going towards 5 Mile. We have overflow of water. We've had it since we've lived on this street. We can't, I have a third of an acre going straight back. We can't use that back part of the property due to water, which we have standing right now. I'm concerned that with them putting all the clubhouse, the pool, the concrete, the garage, the buildings, the weight of all that, I understand that they're going to do their sewer and everything, okay with that, but I'm concerned that all this that they're building somehow is going to come my way. Stormwater runoff, backflow, whatever. I'm just really, we're already, I have a, you know, am I going to lose that part of my property totally where I can't even cut my lawn? Also, I'm concerned about the, are there going to be brick walls separating this precipacity with the neighbors? Because some of us don't want people looking in our house. And if you've got two stories, those people on the top story are going to be seeing, you know. The other thing is the dumpsters. We have a rat problem in this neighborhood at certain times of the year. And if there's going to be dumpsters, I'm assuming the dumpsters are going to be further back towards our properties versus close to 5 Mile, that what is going to happen with that? Are we going to have an increased problem with that? But I really think, and this doesn't pertain to this, but we had a Clark, we had a real estate at the end of our street. We understand that's turned into a gun shop. So now we've got a gun shop, and then we have this. So when does it stop? What more are you going to do? There's one more empty piece of property on 5 Mile that is west of our street, has a beauty shop and an empty lot. Gosh, what are you going to put there? What do you, I mean, I understand it's all about money, or I think it's about money. This is my opinion. But when does it stop that we have to have these kind of things? I don't really have a problem with what's being built. It's just how much is going to be built? On one and a half, was it one and a half acres?
Uh, 1.6. 1.6? Yeah, 1.6.
1.6 acres, all this on 1.6. My God, I've got a third of an acre, and I can't even imagine putting all this on there. And, you know, and then garages? I didn't even realize that. And then 48 parking spots? I mean, so that means each condo, which I understand, they're probably going to need two, they have two cars, because two people are going to live in it, but gosh, you know, that, that's in our backyard. And if they're not going to be brick walls, if they're just going to leave us with our, you know, wrought iron fences that we have, you know, privacy fences, what, you're going to change our neighborhood. And I can't help but think it is going to drop our property value because we've got a gun shop and now we've got this. But, you know, this probably won't change anything, but I just want you to know I'm really concerned because I've got a water issue already, and now I'm really going to have to worry about it.
Well, thank you, Ms. St. Jean. We appreciate your comments, and we'll take those into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Good evening, sir.
How you doing?
Good.
My name's Joe Haffey. I live at, we live at 15341 Fosh. Been there for 25 years. Did this probably 20 years ago for the same thing, and ended up just being what we see now. There's nothing built there, tore down all the trees, and, you know, kind of a debacle. Anyways, I'm against the project. I don't like the concept of having tall buildings looking down in our yards. It's, I don't want people looking in my yard. We're getting ready to add on to our house. It's like, you know, do we want to do this? You know, we found out just about the gun range just by chance with Clark and Fran. My wife called the owner because she hadn't seen him around, and he was like, oh, he had sold it, and it was going to be a gun shop. We went down and talked to the guy who owns the property, and he said it's zoned. He can have a gun range also. So he's trying to buy the property where the mental health building was, right next door, directly east. So we got, you know, that's just jacked up. That being said, a week ago, we had a meeting, and we spoke to Mr. Bazi, several of us, after the meeting. And he stated that, we told him we didn't want it. And he said he'd be willing to eliminate the pool, like you said, the clubhouse, what the heck else?
We don't want it.
It's okay.
Yeah, just the increased traffic on our street. It's a residential street. We got a lot of kids. It's just, yeah, my property value is going to go down. That's pretty much what I got to say.
Well, thank you, Mr. Haffey. Appreciate that.
What is that?
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Hello, my name's John Dimitro. I live at 15410 Fosh Street.
Okay, thank you. And your comments?
Just to start, I'm 100% against this proposal. I don't think there's a single person I've talked to in the area that is for it. I mean, I'm realistic in the manner to where, I understand that anybody owning a piece of property ought to have the rights to make income on it, not just sit and, you know, have to pay taxes on it. That's not earning them an income. But I also feel that it's, you know, not fair to the residents, you know, when they buy, when they purchase a home, they take into factor the surrounding area as a part of one of the biggest decisions as to why they would want to live there. And particularly in my scenario, when I walk out to the, one of the biggest selling pieces to me is when I look out my back window of my bedroom, you know, I'm about 15, 20 feet from my back fence, which is that little square of woods, which it's nice to, and we get a lot of deer. We get turkey and a lot of wild birds, and, you know, overall, just, you know, wildlife that would live in the woods. So as you could imagine, you know, being presented the situation to where, you know, suddenly you're going to go from quite the opposite of a serene setting of having all the wildlife behind you in woods to, you know, like I said, the opposite of that, of having multi-story apartments, including pools and clubhouses, and, you know, I think it's a 48, 48 additional parking spots. I think we could all agree, or I'm going to, I'm going to agree that I 100% would have not have bought that property if that was the case. Now, again, I also take into mind, you know, you're, you know, it's a business too. The City of Livonia will ultimately get more revenue from that property through more people paying taxes, and so will the owner of the property, so I'm not naive to think that, you know, there's an opportunity for something to be done, but, you know, it's just a real crappy spot to do it, like literally in between two people's yards is just crazy to me. Like he said, there's obviously a lot of real estate in Detroit and other less admirable spots, but not so much just necessarily like the city, but even everywhere. It's like if you see a patch of woods, it's like, snap your fingers. We just have to make sure we take it all down and put something up there just to get rid of any single, any single shred of wildlife around us. It's honestly kind of sickening that we do that. And even more so, it's not only are we going to shred any little spot of woods we have left in the area, but we're going to put it right smack dab in the back, between two people's backyards. I mean, I just think that's an appropriate place that you want to put something like that, especially with how condensed the lot size is. Because, because of the lot size and the proposal at hand, it's absolutely necessary per their plans that these buildings, and there's going to be a lot of traffic just a couple of feet from our property lines based on the proposal. So it's not even like, hey, we got a big spot, but we can put it more so in the middle or one direction away from, you know, other people's yards. It's, you know, I'll inevitably have a lot of engagement with the people, you know, that are going to be a part of that, that property right there. So, you know, I don't think anybody could sit here and say, man, I wish instead of looking at this nice patch of woods and wildlife that I have a multi-story, a 48 parking spot, pool, and the whole nine yards, like literally just a couple of feet from their property line. And if I met somebody who said that, that'd be really weird. Also, I mean, I, the kind of people who live in apartments, I don't, certainly don't want to paint with a broad brush, but I was one of those people. Now, statistically, those are the younger generation who aren't in the financial wellbeing to be a homeowner yet or established. They're, you know, they really have a big enough family and things like that. You know, for lack of a better terms, I used to be that person when I was younger, living in apartments. I was a wild animal. So was 99% of the people who lived in these apartments. And I can just tell you, there was a lot of domestic disputes with a lot of other people. You see cops all the time, and you see a lot of interactions with people that you wouldn't normally see in a normal, quiet neighborhood like we have currently. Additionally, so again, to go from wildlife being gone to now having upwards to 48 cars with 48 people assigned to those in a real small area. And like somebody mentioned last, I didn't even think about this, is that our road, our road is a bus route, and it doesn't even have any sidewalks to it.
Right.
So any overflow, and as much as we can agree that that parking could or couldn't be ample for that, when people have parties and get-togethers and, you know, whatever the case is, inevitably, there's going to be overflow of cars that need to park somewhere. And where's that overflow going to go? It's going to go in our residential streets, particularly... And where's that overflow gonna go? It's gonna go in our residential streets, particularly, obviously, and, because I'm literally the third house off the corner. I have little, I have small children, and we don't even have, you know, sidewalks. So whenever we're walking down the street, you could imagine, when you have people parked there, it creates somewhat of a safety hazard by, anywhere you can minimize that is ideal, of course.
So, Mr. Dimitro, would it be safe to assume that if, if you were given a choice, you would prefer either a single-family residential or perhaps a condominium property there instead of the apartments? Is what you're, is that what I'm hearing from you?
Yes, I would, I particularly don't like the aspect of being people like Joe mentioned, a multi-story to where, like I, most of our houses are just one-story. So they can look down, especially being so close, I'm literally looking at my window to people standing on their balcony or whatever the case is, looking down directly into my yard. Even having a privacy fence won't alleviate that situation. Obviously, if there was any kind of development, a privacy fence is going to be necessary, I mean, pretty much required. And having it multi-leveled is, you know, a privacy fence, there's nothing you can do essentially to have any kind of privacy in your backyard whatsoever.
Right, makes sense.
So again, I think I made my point clear. Obviously, I am including everybody around me. Don't think it's appropriate to move forward with that. And, you know, we really like that retracted. Thank you.
Definitely, well, thank you, Mr. Dimitro, we appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to make any comments?
Good evening, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Joanne Davis, I live at one five eight five two Foch with my husband. We've been, he's been there between twenty-five and thirty years. I'd like to ask a question. I feel like we're on trial. The, Mr. Ventura, you brought to Mr. Long's attention the fact that the sign was supposed to be posted to let everyone driving down Five Mile know that there was a rezoning issue. Why was that not put into effect? Why was it not put in force?
I, I can answer the question for you, Ms. Davis. That is a, that's a requirement that the petitioner has, and when he has an opportunity to come back up here and speak, if he wants to address this in more detail, he can, but what I'll say is that because of the fact that the sign was not posted, which is required, that is a factor that we're going to, that comes into our decision-making process, so. So needless to say, we are aware of the fact that it wasn't done, and it will be addressed because of that.
Is it supposed to be done?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it wasn't done?
Correct.
So the citizens who drive in Livonia have been denied the information necessary to their well-being.
Well, this is, that's one of two ways that we try to notify citizens. Of course, you, the immediate residents receive a notification that's mailed to them. We also post this agenda publicly in our newspaper and on our internet and so on, you know, so there's a public posting. But the sign itself is also an important public notice to anyone who lives in the area or drives by that area that a rezoning is being planned for that site. So that's, that's why we have that, that sign requirement.
I wish it would be put into place.
Yes.
I wish that everything would be halted and put on temporary hold until that requirement and others that I've heard have been fulfilled.
And that, that is.
This, well, we can do this, or we can, no.
That, that is an.
That's our lives.
You're correct, that is one opportunity.
That is our lives. If they were doing it in your neighborhood and you lived on our street, you would be here too.
Correct, and that's one of the decisions that we can make tonight. We could, we could table this item and put it on hold, or we could vote on it today. So we'll see what happens.
I hope in good conscience that you treat us as you do those that you love.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Hi, good evening, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Nicole Noack, and I live at one five four five five Green Lane Avenue. And I wrote what I wanted to say because I didn't wanna forget anything, so sorry, I'm gonna kinda be reading it instead of looking at you.
That's fine.
Um, but I first just wanna say I am against this plan. That when I first got married to my husband, that we lived in a condo, and we lived near apartments, we lived near mobile homes. And when we decided we wanted to start a family, we wanted to move to a home, we wanted a neighborhood. We wanted a peaceful, safe, quiet space to raise our family. And we love Livonia, we are so happy we found a home here. And with that home, we found that sense of safety, that sense of quiet, that sense of community. And I really feel that this plan, that adding this much density to the population that's already here, between our houses, as everyone said, really, it, it takes away all of those things I love about Livonia. You know, it adds the, they mentioned the dumpsters, the noise, lights, traffic, the overflow parking on our streets, that loss of privacy with the condos being taller than every other home that is there. So just really feeling that it's just losing my sense of safety, my sense of quiet, my sense of community in my neighborhood. All these things that are important to me as I raise my family in the city. And then just this past Monday morning, I have a two-year-old daughter, and we were eating breakfast, and we spent the entire time eating, watching four deer play outside in the backyard. And if this plan goes through as proposed with removing these woods, mornings like that are gone forever, and that just makes me really sad.
Thank you, Ms. Noack, appreciate your comments. Good evening, sir.
Hey, I'm Jason Noack, same one five four five five Green Lane Avenue.
Got it.
I didn't write down my things, so I'll be a little more rambly than my wife was.
It's okay.
First off, Mr. Bosse, I'm sorry to hear about your father, I hope he does have a fast recovery. And I'm also very encouraged to hear you mentioned the, the topics that we brought up to him the other day. I think, as my wife said, one of the, one of our bigger points are those woods. Those, those woods are nice there, they do bring wildlife. Yeah, and it leaves a buffer zone. I think that, and I'm opposed to it, but I do understand at the same time that you've purchased that property, and I'd like to, to, to work with you on, on building what, what could be commendable for all of us, or what could work for all of us. I know, I know the density of what you're proposing seems, seems intense, the, the size, the scale. Just with it being over two stories, as we've all mentioned, the majority of our homes are all one. So, so the idea of it going over two stories does, does seem to impose a lot into our houses and into our, our yards and things like that. So just, just some of, some, to add on to what my wife was saying, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Noack. Anyone else wishing to make comments? Please come forward. One, one second, sir, there's another gentleman coming forward. Oh, very good.
I understand that the final word, who makes this decision is the city council, right?
Correct.
Now, has it ever happened that outside contractors do contribute to the councilman's campaign fund?
I can't speak to that, sir, I don't know.
Well, I know it's happened in the past, and I'm afraid a donation from an outside contractor to their campaign might change the vibe.
Right, I understand that question, and that would be a.
That's all I gotta say.
Right, that was, that's a question you can ask them. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Hi, I'm Kenneth Petty, one five three three one Foch. Basically, the first house when you drive in, the big tall one behind the beauty salon there. My wife and I, we're both opposed to such a large building being put up. We do have three children, two small children, and one eighteen-year-old. Our two smallest, they do like to ride their bike up to the gas station, they'll, well, and, and we do have a nice view to watch them actually make the trip and back. So that, that's, I know that's, that may go away regardless of if a smaller building goes in or anything of that nature. But the idea also of a large development going in increases to us the, the threat that there's a lot more unknown variables coming into the community, that a smaller development could possibly diminish. You're introducing so many more families, so many, so much more influx of, of tenancy who don't really have that permanence that our community carries with it. We also feel that it could possibly, depending on the scale of this, I couldn't exactly hear how many units or how many families were anticipated in the home, or in the, in the units, pardon me. So twelve units. What, what influx would that be to the educational system and the community? With tenancy, I would not anticipate them having the same values to reinforce community and equity in the community. Let me see here, apologize, I got a little off track. Just from our experience, we came from Redford Township about four years ago in a time that renting was just skyrocketing in our neighborhood. We were one of the few actual homeowners left in the community. And we had joined the parent, the parent club in the neighborhood because we wanted to contribute. And in that kind of environment, you see such a small parent participation because they don't have the equity in the community that they're not investing their time, their additional time, or maybe they don't have the time to invest in their students' after-school activities and school endeavors. And I wouldn't want a huge influx of extra kids saturating our educational experience for our own children. So that's something that kind of concerns me, because they would all be in our school district and in our schools that our students attend. And then on top of that, you know, just like everybody's been saying, there's this fear of reduced property values. We've been working very hard on maintaining our home and building equity in our home, and we have plans to, like our neighbors, build on to our existing property and increase our equity. And we feel that something of this nature would diminish that as well as reduce property taxes because you're reducing the values of the homes in the area around this large development. So, that being said, if we could, oh, and on top of that, we do have a large, as, as everyone has been stating, a large amount of water comes in our area. It, it feeds into the, the local river there, and everything drains through that back area. And if that's not available for water to soak into, it's gonna go to everyone else's yards, possibly more into our yard. We already have quite a bit of saturation on a heavy rain that gets into our garage. And we wouldn't want more coming back into our property if we can prevent that. So, that being said, if we could negotiate on something smaller, you know, single-family home, small condos, less parking spaces, more natural scenery, more of what the community is built around, I think that would be a much more reasonable request, and I think that would be a much easier impact for us to absorb, as well as our school systems, the transportation involved with that, and all the possible traffic that could come with such a big facility.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Petty, appreciate your comments. There's one lady coming forward. Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, Alex Cleveland, one five four three three Green Lane. In fact, I've been in the neighborhood so long, I know all the original owners of all these homeowners.
Sure.
And I'm just gonna repeat a lot of what everybody has said that I'm concerned about. We're basically two streets of single-family homes. Our backyards back up to each other, but we have that wooded area between us. There's that empty land that's closer to Five Mile that doesn't really impose on us, but, you know, again, the flooding is bad on Foch, but it's even worse on Green Lane, and I could show you pictures of it. And it isn't just after a rain, it's like right now, I can't walk into my backyard without wearing boots. You know, we're concerned about the dumpsters, the two stories, we're all single-story families. Parking along our fences, which is what the proposal showed. You know, I raised my children in this home and in this backyard, and I can't imagine them playing and having cars parking. And the parking would go that way, facing our, facing our fence. I just, you know, I think the one thing that I wanna impart on you is that whatever decision you make, you'll be able to go home to your, you know, your home, will have to live with the consequences forever, forever, however long we live there. So it will change our lives, our home, and having grown up in Livonia, a mile away from where I live now, my older son lives in the house that I grew up in, it's always been Livonia was a safe, quiet, you know, wonderful place to raise your kids. My son's got a great education here, it's, it's, it's been wonderful. But things will change, and it won't change for the better for us. So just, you know, keep that in mind, and good luck.
Thank you, Ms. Cleveland. There's one more gentleman coming forward here. And we'll wrap up the comments here soon. Good evening, sir.
Hello, Jeff Douglas, one five four four five Green Lane Avenue. Hopefully the last one, though, we're kinda regurgitating all the same things. I did wanna start off with, it will be a negative impact on our property value. It's the biggest reason why I'm against this. I moved into my house with my wife six years ago. Forever resident of Westland, but I've grown up in Livonia's school system. All my friends lived in Livonia, I've been part of the community my entire life, so going on thirty-four years now. Livonia's always been a safe place. That's one of the reasons that my wife and I decided, when we purchased our house, that we wanted to start a family here. We went through numerous, numerous houses, we finally found something that we felt was gonna give us the opportunity to create a life, create a family, and grow within our residence. So a decrease in our property value is going to monetarily impact us. The next thing is the backflow of water and the retention of water in our yards. So I've spent close to fifteen thousand dollars trying to solve the standing water in my backyard. At one point, we had tens of thousands of tadpoles that just came and bred in our yard every year. I was driving over them in the morning when I backed out of my garage, and I was driving over them at night when I pulled my car into my garage. Not to mention that, you know, the amount of noise that the tadpoles make is just astounding, okay? All night, they're going, it's worse than crickets. So I've spent over fifteen thousand dollars, and I've spent countless hours of my own time trying to solve and fix this problem. The problem still hasn't been fixed. I actually have contractors that will not take on my job quoting me upwards of thirty thousand dollars to solve this water issue. And they cannot guarantee a solve. When I originally started this endeavor, I contacted the city about the water issue. And one of the things that I was told is, hey, you know what, kinda sucks, you're kinda screwed, and you're stuck with it. Unless you want to put all the time, energy, and money into getting it resolved. And part of this is because when the subdivision was designed back in the fifties and sixties, that there was a natural easement for both the people on Foch and the people on Green Lane in the back of our lots. So that would be, for me, the west end of my property line, that the natural easement flows south towards Five Mile Road, and that is where the water is supposed to exit. And that's where it's supposed to be picked up in the storm drain. However, due to change in topography over time, and this was something that the city had informed me, that it's not really their fault, it's not really anybody else's fault, it's just how it is, it's. it's just how it is, it's geography, it's topography. Over time, uh my house has become one of the lowest points in all of the neighbors surrounding me. Currently, uh my neighbor was just up here, she has a bunch of ice in her backyard, I have over eight inches of ice frozen in the backyard. That ice will not melt and will not dry and absorb into the ground until close to Fourth of July. Historically, that's just how it has always been. Walking, we walk numerous times uh throughout the week, we look into the neighbor's backyard, and there's constantly water in the back of all of our properties. And this is going to be something that, again, from monetary standpoint, will impact us because if they're doing any sort of construction, that is not going to address the issue with where my water should flow going south towards that property being developed. Again, not necessarily their fault because this changes of topography over time, and you know, it could have been poor city planning, something that engineers didn't know about then. However, this will cause a backflow of water, even more water, to accumulate in my backyard. There's also a health risk. The amount of stench, the amount of mosquitoes, the amount of bacteria, the amount of viruses that grow within that standing water, that stagnant standing water creates a health issue for myself, my neighbors, and the animals around it too. Because we have a lot of squirrels, a lot of deer, uh we even have groundhogs that come into our water drinking the water. So that is, you know, an issue of health as well. Another thing that we can look at as an issue of health is with the increased units coming in. Uh waste disposal. So we already have issues with rats, mice that come into our yard. I have rats that try to get into my garage. I have to keep my garage closed at all times because the colder weather comes, the rats start looking for warmer places. Bringing these units in is going to increase that amount of rodent infestation, both rats and mice, to the area. Another thing to consider is the safety. So whether it's apartment, whether it's condos, unless these people coming in are going to be purchasing and putting a stake of their own into whatever's being developed, these people will not have a stake like the rest of the property owners surrounding the development will have. I take pride in my property. My neighbors commend me on how I keep my property up. The way that I keep my property up brings me business as a small business owner by people looking at my property, hey, I want you to do work for me. Okay, these people coming in will not have that same stake. They will not keep up with the area around them like a property owner like us that live in the area that have created the community around that area will. Another thing to look at from a safety standpoint is when you're bringing in these people that don't have a stake, they don't care as much. Okay, you get that riffraff. I don't wanna stereotype any sort of demographics that will come in, so I'll say again, as these people that don't have a stake like we do. Okay, they will bring in riffraff. Statistically speaking, crime will increase. And uh two of my good friends are police officers, they reside in the city of Livonia as well. An exit for a criminal is going to be a dark place that they cannot be easily followed by a vehicle. What does that look like? That looks like our backyards. Okay, so whether it is broad daylight, whether it's middle of the night, we have that increased risk that someone's going to be running through our backyards trying to evade police because of some crime that's been committed because that's the easiest getaway. From a safety standpoint as well, I have two young children, I have a one-year-old and a three-year-old. Okay, I also, in addition to the money that I spent and the time that I spent trying to fix the water in my backyard, also spent about a thousand dollars putting privacy bushes up so that people would not be able to see my son or daughter playing around in a bathing suit in the middle of summer as they're coming up the street because it's exposed from the street to see them to my backyard. Therefore, I've put privacy bushes up to eliminate that coming from the street so that my kids and my wife would feel more secure, safe at home. Okay, that will be eliminated by bringing in potentially multi-story units that, you know, we lose the privacy.
Understood.
So now, my wife isn't going to feel comfortable taking my son and daughter to play out in a splash pad in the back of our yard during the summer months because we're gonna have people getting in and out of their cars, you know, from not even a hundred feet away. Okay? Away from the loss of privacy, another thing that we can look at is why we got into this neighborhood. We got into this neighborhood because I look out my back window and I don't feel like I'm in the middle of a city. I feel like I'm in a nice rural area. My neighbors have large properties that I don't feel like I'm on top of their house. I look out and I see deer. My daughter, my son, jump up and down, deer, daddy, deer. We walked out, there was a twelve-point buck in our backyard that we were able to say fifteen feet away from. We feed them. We have squirrels that come up and we feed them peanuts on a daily basis. We have a vast amount of birds that come into the area. You know, this is something that, you know, you could look at it as a potential like safety issue because the next place for them to run is Five Mile. However, this herd of deer go from the southernmost part of the properties between Green Lane and Fosh, where the tree line is going up to uh where the property developed is uh, you know, ends, and the deer migrate north to the creek. You know, this is something that, okay, if we don't wanna displace animals, then you know, we need to at least keep tree line in there because that's where they bed down most nights. We watch them when we wake up in the morning. The ambiance of why we moved in is a big reason. That's why we wanna move there. I go out at night, and other than a couple lights on the back of my neighbors' houses, I don't see anything other than stars. We don't have streetlights on either side of our streets. So again, with the development coming in, that will bring in light and noise, and that's going to, you know, disrupt the ambiance. Again, if I go to sell, it's going to deter future buyers because of not wanting to be next to a large development like that. And then lastly is, you know, we cannot just assume that, you know, the property doesn't have the same rights that we do as property owners to be developed. You know, we're just asking for some compromise. Okay, this is, you can see that, you know, we have a strong community presence about how we feel about the area that we live in. We have a lot of legacy people living in here, we have a lot of new people coming in here to start families. And that was the why I moved in with my wife.
Understood.
Okay, um just looking at going forward with development, we would be open to something that would be a single-story, uh something that offered its tenants' opportunity at permanent residency. So then that would incorporate their stake into the area around them, uh helping rebuild the community morale, you know, if this does get developed. And then keeping the area of trees as a buffer zone. So that way, we might not get as impacted, uh me personally, where my property is located. I can't speak for the others that are south of me because they won't have that buffer of trees.
Sure.
So in lieu of that, if something is developed, perhaps hedge, firm, something to create privacy. And then more than anything, uh the issue with water. So if something is to be developed there, the issue of water needs to come into play so that it will positively impact all the residents that, you know, are north of the property.
Definitely. Just, just, just your word too, Mr. Douglas, uh because you did address the issue of water and the fact that this was an area that was developed quite a, a long time ago. And you are correct that the standards have changed in terms of water management. Uh there is, the county requires much more uh engineering and work put into water management when properties are developed than they ever used to in the past. Uh and this development, if it is developed in any way, uh whether it's one-story, single-family homes, or apartments, or condominiums, or whatever is proposed, water management and making sure that the water on that property stays on that property and is controlled into uh the sewer system is uh, will be a, a definite part of this process through the engineering. So uh that will be addressed, just to give you at least some comfort that that's not gonna be forgotten about.
Okay, 'cause that's
'cause it's very important to you, obviously.
Yeah.
It is to us.
More than anything because I have, you know, almost a quarter of an acre of a property, and I can't use the majority of my backyard until the middle of summer, almost.
And it seems counterintuitive sometimes when you have an open piece of property like this, that when you develop on it, that a lot of people think that the water's just gonna shed away from there and go into everyone else's property. The reality is, when you have an open field, there is no water management in that field right now, other than it soaking into the ground. And if you have a heavy clay area or whatever, the water's just gonna shed to the neighboring properties. Uh so when you do develop it, at least the thing, the elements such as, you know, roofs and downspouts and eaves troughs and catch basins and all those things are put in the, into the development to control that water and direct it uh into the sewer system. So it, it actually often improves the water quality or the water drainage in that area.
Yeah, I can understand that. It's from my perspective and uh from the education that I've been able to gain over the past six years of dealing with this issue, is that uh the property that is, you know, set to be developed does sit higher topographically than my uh property.
Yes.
So from a topographical standpoint, uh you know, we would have to do something that would bring in a drain across the back of our properties, um extending, you know, further north than the development, you know, uh the lines or the borders sit at.
Sure, and that's all factored in when it's, when it's engineered. So just, just so you know, it's not something that we're gonna, uh, you know, that will be dealt with at some point when this property's developed, so.
Thank you.
We appreciate your comments, Mr. Douglas. And we have one, one more gentleman here. Good evening, sir.
Hello, my name is Paul DeWise, I live at one five four nine one Fosh Street. And I, I just wanted to bring up once, I, I agree with everything everyone is saying here. One thing for me, my house sits on two lots on Fosh Street, and so we have just under an acre. And what it seems like to me is what we're trying to do here is put so much stuff into one small little area. If you drive by that area, I can't even imagine that many parking spots and, you know, two big buildings and a pool and a, and a clubhouse. I mean, that would be like putting it on my backyard, I just can't even believe, it's kinda like taking a thousand-square-foot house and putting six bedrooms in it. To me, that's what it seems like. So my recommendation is try to find out a way to put, you know, a few houses in there or some low condos or, you know, something, again, where people have a owner's stake because we all know, I, I, just like John, lived in apartments, I was young and crazy at one point, and um, and stuff happens. I mean, apartments bring in transient people, I don't care what you say, that's what happens. And that's what we will have in our neighborhood. I've been there over twenty years, raised three daughters in a great, quiet, very nice neighborhood, and I think we're being invaded on. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. DeWise. It's good to see you again, by the way.
Can I make, I just wanna make one more comment?
Sure.
This was the first, um, the lady you brought up about the sign, there's supposed to be a sign on the property.
Correct.
As like the proposal of the rezoning.
Correct.
Was um the owner of the property notified that the sign was supposed to be up?
We're gonna talk about that in, in just a little bit with, with the property owner.
Oh, okay.
So.
Oh, 'cause my assumption, and I don't know if this is true, that's why I asked that question. If he was notified that that sign was supposed to be up and he still hasn't taken action to do that, I think that's just the very minimum of an ask from a city council and uh due diligence and a show sign of respect at a bare minimum to the residents in that neighborhood. And if he can't even do something like that, I think that's very telling of the character that we're dealing with. If we have to, something as simple as that to try to pull teeth on to get done, let alone conversations ever had that he's willing to work with and be flexible to things. You know, anybody can say anything they want, but once they get approval to do something, all those good intentions uh can go, obviously, right out the window, so.
No, I understand, sir. That, that's something that I believe was a misunderstanding, uh but we'll, we'll get that cleared up, so, thank you very much. There's one more gentleman that's asking to speak here, so I'll give him the last word here. Good evening, sir.
Hi, um, I live at uh one five eight oh nine Fosh.
Okay.
I've lived there for about thirty years, raised, raised my son there, and it was a nice neighborhood to raise my son. And uh, you know, you walk up and down these streets, walking your dog, I walk my dogs up, up and down these streets, and it's, it's a quiet neighborhood. And, and like my neighbors are my friends. I've, I've helped my neighbors with all kinds of projects over the years, they've helped me with my projects. I've put probably upwards of a hundred thousand dollars into my property since I've moved there into, into improvements, home improvements. I spent probably in the last three years, twelve, twelve thousand dollars in fencing. And uh the one thing that everybody in that neighborhood has in common is that they're homeowners. And I, I think I heard a gentleman a few minutes ago talk about the stake we all have in that neighborhood, and we do. And the difference with this proposal is you're gonna have transients coming in and out of there, here today, gone tomorrow, who don't have a stake in that neighborhood. And I, I personally couldn't care less who, who lives next door to me in any way, but I'd like to feel like they were, they had a, they had ownership in the, in the neighborhood, and that they cared about what's going on. By nature, people who are, who are coming in temporarily do not have that kind of concern about the neighborhood. So yeah, now, just in this last year, we've had, there's a commercial building at the end of the street at Five End, Five End uh Fosh. It was a real estate office. They've moved out, and I know what's coming in, it's gonna be a gun shop. That's not something I'm crazy about either. But I, I don't want it to keep going down the slide from, from there. And um, you know, whether, what, what, whether whatever is developed on that land is, you know, one-family housing or even a professional building, like a dental office, or maybe a, a law office or something like that, that would be fine, I'd have no problem with that. But this, what's proposed here is not in keeping with what's been there for years. And it's gonna affect every home- And it's going to affect every homeowner in that, in that area. And, you know, I know you guys, I assume, are all Livonia residents.
Yes.
And, uh, I don't know where you live, but if you weren't, if you weren't sitting up there and you lived in our neighborhood, I would imagine you'd be sitting out here right now.
Mm-hmm, very much.
Voicing the same concerns that we are. So I hope you keep that in mind when you make a decision.
And can I just get your name, sir? Sir?
Steven Bernardi.
Very good, thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
All right.
Mr. Bazey, did you want to, uh, come back up? Uh, we always like to give the petitioner an opportunity to address any concerns that were heard. Again, we're not going to get into a back and forth debate, uh, but, uh, if there's any particular comments you wanted to address or anything else you'd like to say to us, you can do that. Please speak to us, though, sir.
Uh, first and foremost, I wanna, I wanna say I understand and, um, appreciate all your concerns, everybody's concern. Because I wouldn't want nobody coming into my home or my neighborhood and just invading the neighborhood, just doing what they want. I would want it to stay a safe neighborhood. And I think we got a little misunderstanding. Okay, the, the only reason we are changing the, from NM one to NM two is because we're trying to put a garage. These are eighteen hundred square foot condominiums. They range anywhere from two fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and they're owned.
Wait, they're condominiums?
Yes. They're not apartments.
Hang on, hang on.
The only reason we're changing it from NM one to NM two is because, so we can have an extra half story because NM one is only allowed two stories. Okay, and we're not going to own these, these condominiums. These are going to be owned by people. We, we don't want to keep, uh, any of the real estate in that regards. And in regards to the dumpsters and whatnot, we'll make sure to keep that in task to, to where we keep it under control. The forest, the little forest in the back, I understand what you guys are saying. I would want it to stay the same way. Uh, we, we're more than willing to clean it up and keep it the same way. We just wanted to clean it up because it doesn't look good the way it is.
Mm-hmm.
The water, I have nothing in regards to the water, that's not in my control, that's in the city's control. And like I said, I would love to accommodate to anything and everything they, they want because that's, that's where they live. And I, I'm willing to accommodate to where, how, how they're living, to keep it that way. And anything that's in my hands, I'll be more than willing to have, uh, to, to do. But in regards to the water and their, that condition, I have nothing to do with that. Obviously, that's in the city's sake.
Doesn't.
But these are condominiums. These are eighteen hundred square foot condominiums. They're not apartments. And every, uh, home is, every condo is separate than the other. They're connecting, there are six condos connected and six condos connected. They're twelve units. And in regards to the parking, whatever the city says, how many, how many, uh, parking spots we need? If they say twenty-six, I'll be more than happy to put the rest as landscape and make it look nice. But I mean, that's how much property we have. We want it to fill out the property. And that's all I got to say. Thank you very much, and I appreciate everybody's concerns.
Mr. Bazey, stay up here for just one second in case there's any additional questions from any of our commissioners.
Yes.
I do appreciate you clarifying, uh, the use of apartments versus condominiums. That is something that even in our notes has been somewhat unclear as to what the intent was. So, uh, that's, that's helpful not only to us, but also to the residents here.
Yes.
Is there any, uh, questions from any of our commissioners for our petitioner, Mr. Long?
Thank you. Mr. Bazey, um.
Excuse me, some of these facts that you're stating, is this in writing? Is this in?
Sir, this is all going to be put into a record. It's a public record. Everything being said tonight is being, is going to be written down and will be passed along the city council based on whatever decisions being made. So it is in writing, yes.
I have a question.
Uh, one second, Mr. Bazey. Let me, let Mr. Long speak.
Go ahead, Mr. Long.
Thank you. Um, I know Mr. Ventura brought this up a little bit earlier, but I need to understand because the, the renderings that we're looking at show three distinct floor plans, which would indicate three stories. You keep saying two and a half stories.
That's it.
So explain to me how, 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 how far down are you? So that's the front side, and the garage will be accessible from the backside.
The backside.
So how far down are you digging into the ground?
That I wouldn't know. My architect would have to tell you exactly how, how that would go. So because I'm, I'm not familiar with how, how far down and how far up.
Okay.
I know that you pull up to, this is a building, you pull up from the back, you go into your, uh, you go into your condo.
Mm-hmm.
You go three steps up, and you're in your living room, and you go three steps up, you're in your dining room, bathroom, and you're, I mean, dining room, kitchen, and bedrooms.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's two stories, but the half story, it's not, it's two and a half stories, I'm sorry. And the only reason we change it from NM one to NM two, NM one allows only two stories.
Correct.
Okay, that's the only reason we're rezoning into NM two. And I, each condo will be worth anywhere from two fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, I mean, in regards to the, you know, your house and how the value of the house.
Sure.
I don't think that should be.
So, Mr. Bazey, I, I, let me, let me cut you off because I, I understand that, and, um, I applaud you for, for making that point that it's a condominium, and I think that that, that is important. Um, and I know you've been put into a spot here where you're kind of pinch hitting. Um, however, that's kind of important information that I need. And wi- without the ability to answer my question, um, you know, it's, i- i- it's, I, I can't support something that, that doesn't.
Totally understand.
That, that I can't understand. And so, um, you know, that, that's fine. Um, Mr. Chairman, I'll yield my, my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. And, and again, just to note for everyone's benefit, uh, we are looking at the zoning of the property tonight. Uh, the site plan that's been presented, these renderings and so on are something that would be discussed and, and addressed in very, very detailed, uh, process, uh, which would happen after the zoning, uh, takes place. So, uh, it's not to say that this is going to be the final product or what, what exactly is going to be on this site. Uh, any other questions from any of our commissioners for our petitioner? If not.
I have one thing.
Go ahead, Mr. Bazey.
In regards to the sign, uh, I've done this twice before in other cities. And I've paid the fee, and in, in other cities, they put up the sign. I found out today from, uh, from, uh, the, I, I got a call and an email today that the sign was not put up.
Right.
And I called the architect, I told him, were we supposed to put up the sign? He's like, I thought the city was supposed to, so it was a full misunderstanding. And if I knew that we were supposed to put up the sign, that would have been put up, I think it's fifteen days before the meeting, right?
Correct.
So I, I would have done that, but I did not notify, I, I was not notified that we were responsible to put up the sign.
Right, so it was a misunderstanding.
Yes.
As to whose, whose role it was to do that, okay.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Care Magna.
Mr. Bazey, you said you've done two other projects?
Yes.
Tell me, tell me where they're at.
One is in Dearborn.
Give me the address.
The address is seven four three zero Greenfield. And the other project we're working right now at two zero one one Evangeline.
Evangeline?
Yes. Dearborn Heights, four eight one two seven.
First one was in Dearborn, second one's in Dearborn Heights?
Two zero one one Evangeline. It's a, it's a, it's a house, actually, that we're demo, demoing and putting three, three houses on three parcels.
All right, Mr. Bazey, the first one was in Dearborn, second one's in Dearborn Heights?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Care Magna. If there's no further questions for our petitioner, we'll close the public hearing at this time, and a motion will be in order.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Care Magna.
I'll make a denying motion that the request to rezone the property two seven four eight zero five Mile Road from, from NM one to NM two is hereby denied for the following reasons. Number one, the petitioner's failed to affirmantly show, affirmatively show that the proposed change in zoning to NM two, multifamily residential, and the intended design and layout of the development as presented to the planning commission will be compatible and in harmony with the surrounding residential neighborhoods. Number two, that the plan to construct two, three-story apartment buildings that exceed the maximum usable floor area as a percentage of lot area is contrary to the goals and objectives of the zoning ordinance, which seeks to create multifamily housing projects that are compatible with nearby single-family development in terms of height, bulk, and density. Number three, that the proposed zoning, proposed change of zoning is not needed to develop the property. Number four, that the proposed change of zoning is inconsistent with the established pattern of the development in the surrounding area and would adversely alter the character of the neighborhood. And number five, that the proposed zoning and use is contrary to the purposes, goals, and objectives of the zoning ordinance, which seek to ensure compatibility and appropriateness of uses so as to enhance property values and create and promote a more favorable environment for neighborhood use and enjoyment.
Is there support for that motion?
Support.
All right, there's a motion to deny put on the floor by Mr. Care Magna, supported by Mr. Ventura. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Miller, was there going to be an additional, uh, clause in the denying resolution in regards to the signage?
Yes, we'd, I, I haven't come up with the language yet, but we'd like to, if he wants, usually a rezoning, if you deny it, sorry. If you deny it, it automatically goes to city council. We're saying because he didn't put the sign up, if he wants to change the plans or come back to us, that it should come to the planning commission first with a sign on the property. So I'll come up with some language, but that's the gist of it type of thing.
Okay, and is the maker?
That's, that's fine, Scott, yes.
And the supporter is also agreeable to that?
I'd agree.
Okay.
We just want to send it to city council.
Well, the problem is if it's sent to city council without the sign being on the property, they're going to bounce it right back to us and say that the, the required minimum, uh, notice was not given.
All right.
So, uh, and this also allows the petitioner, if, if this is, if this denial is approved, um, I'm using a double negative here. Um, it's a little confusing. Uh, that, it means that the rezoning or the zoning of the property would continue to be NM one, and they would be able to, uh, build a two-story property or other type of development, uh, that is, uh, more and similar to the existing zoning in that area. Is that correct, Mr. Miller?
Correct. You could do whatever is allowed in, uh, NM one.
Okay, so it's, it's not completely stopping the petitioner from being able to utilize the property. It's just saying that, uh, a three-story or, or higher development's not, uh, desirable.
Correct, or apartments.
Okay, or apartments, correct. Okay, uh, if there's, is there any questions, comments on the motion to deny from any of our commissioners? If not, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Care Magna votes aye. Uh, Ms. Ventura?
Votes aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Chairman will show.
Votes aye. Motion to deny has been passed, and, uh, welcome the, Mr. Bazey, you heard, uh, the next steps that will be available to you as a, as a petitioner. So please get in contact with our planning department if you, uh, want to do anything. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
And thank you, residents, for coming tonight and speaking on this item as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll give, uh, just a moment, uh, for the audience to, uh, clear out a bit, and then we'll move on to our next hearing. You're welcome. I think you can read it out, Mr. Secretary, item number two.
Item two is petition two thousand twenty-one dash eleven dash zero two dash two three submitted by Arnie Landscape and Construction LLC, requesting waiver use approval pursuant to section six point five eight of the Livonia Vision Twenty-One zoning ordinance to operate a special trade contractor's yard at three four four two two Rosati Avenue, located on the west side of Stark Road, just south of the CSX Railroad in the southwest quarter of section twenty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Uh, Mr. Miller?
All right, the, uh, this subject site is lot twelve of the Rosati Industrial Park subdivision. The, uh, site is zoned M one. The, uh, lot twelve, existing on the property at this time is a five thousand eight hundred square foot building. You have parking along the west side of the building, and behind the building, you have a forty-foot wide asphalt paved area. One of the special requirements of a special trade contractor's yard is that the, except for the front yard, the entire, uh, the rest of the lot should be fenced in. The petitioner's proposing to, uh, uh, including the parking lot and the paved area behind it would be fenced in completely with a six-foot-high chain fence. Petitioner's proposing to, uh, store mostly materials related to the petitioner's building, uh, construction projects. And that is the extent of the, uh, proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And there's, is there correspondence for this item?
Uh, the first correspondence is for the, uh, Office of Treasurer. In accordance with your request, the treasurer office has reviewed the name and address in connection with the above noted petition. At this time, taxes are due but are not delinquent. Therefore, I have no objections to the proposal and had signed by Linda Schill, Treasurer, City of Livonia. Uh, the next one is from Department of Finance. I have reviewed the address connected to the above noted petition. As there are no outstanding amounts receivable, general or water or sewer, I have no objections to proposal. That is signed by Connie Complula, Chief Accountant, sorry. The second is from the Inspection Department. Pursuant to the request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed. The department has no objections to this petition. That is signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. The, uh, next one is from the Public Safety Police. Uh, I have reviewed the plans in connection with the petition. I have no objections to proposal and had assigned by Scott, uh, Chapansky, Sergeant, Traffic Bureau. Livonia Fire and Rescue. This office has reviewed the subject, the site plan submitted in connection with the request to construct a commercial building on the property located in the above referenced address. I have no objections to proposal with one, the following stipulation. Owner must provide a Knox, Knox box, fire department key box for a, for fire department after our access to the building. Additionally, a key must be provided in the Knox, Knox box for access to all fenced-in areas. Uh, the, uh, this is the last correspondence from the Engineering Department. In accordance with the request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to proposal. The subject parcel is assigned the address three four four two two, uh, Rosati Avenue. The existing parcel currently has access to public water main, sanitary sewer, storm sewer within the Rosati Avenue right-of-way. The developer will need to meet the current engineering requirements for the proposed project, including stormwater detention per the latest version of the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance. That is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer, and that's the extent of the correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any questions for our planning staff? If not, our petitioner, oh, excuse me, Mr. Ventura.
Mr. Miller, uh, is this, is this a waiver use that we're approving here?
Yeah, uh, outside storage or special contractor yard, but to store outside storage is a waiver.
So this is waiver use?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Mr. Long?
Um, given that items two and three are basically the same thing, are we able to consolidate them and take them together here, or?
Uh, we're gonna, uh, certainly have a much briefer presentation, uh, on the, on the second, or excuse me, the third agenda item. But, uh, they are two different properties, so we'll have to have two separate votes on it.
Understand, thank you.
But thank you, though, yeah, they, they are very similar. So it's not uncommon that some of this discussion will bleed over on, on both of these. Uh, any other questions, comments? If not, uh, our petitioner is here in the audience. Good evening, sir.
Yes.
Just start with your name and address for our record.
Ron Emeling, uh, three four four two two Rosati Avenue, Livonia, Michigan, four eight one five oh.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Emeling, for being here tonight. Is there anything else that you wanted to add, uh, before we get questions from any of our commissioners?
Uh, at this time, it's pretty cut and dry. It's just, uh, we're just asking for a waiver to, to store outside, uh, building materials while we're, I own the development. So I'm the developer of, uh, I bought it from Mr. Rosati approximately a year ago. So as we build, and I explained this last week in a, in a, in a, um, the other meeting on Tuesday, uh, the board meeting, that, uh, we have excess materials, and when you buy to do a home or, or multiple homes, you buy in bulk. If you go to Costco, you buy bulk. So we buy our materials in bulk, so there's some leftover until the next bill gets started. Lot number two that we're getting ready to get started on, we have leftover materials, getting ready to start lot number two. It's going to be the same size building, and, uh, I was going to, uh, suggest that, uh, if the board wasn't real fond of requesting the waiver for lot twelve, uh, where we currently are working out of, uh, that we're more desirable to get lot two approved because lot twelve, we believe, has been sold. And instead of burdening the city with that. And instead of burdening the city with that particular situation and us spending the finances to put the fence up and gate it and then the Knox box for the fire department and all this other stuff, that we'll let the new tenant deal with that and cross those roads when if and so he wants to do that. And we'd be leaning more today toward getting the approval for lot two for the fenced-in yard. I did, we were going to go and get a temporary construction easement on lot 10 and store our equipment there for now to kind of avoid a bunch of extra red tape and going through the city and us putting up the fence and moving out in six months now when, when the next building's up. Because our goal is to build the buildings. Unfortunately, I'm not blessed with millions of dollars in finance, so we're going to build one, get it on the market, sell it, and then we move on to the next lot and build another one, get it on the market and sell it, and we just keep playing leapfrog until the building and the development is completed. But in the meantime, lot two is going to be more of our, we're going to kind of stay more permanent there and we're going to need the outdoor storage there more than lot 12 at this time.
Now, just for the commissioners' benefits, our map that we have of the site has addresses on it, does not have lot numbers. So can you tell me which address you're looking, or you're saying that you would prefer to keep this material on?
Right now, we're using lot 10. I don't have addresses in my head like that. And I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared for that question, but lot 10, I mean lot 12, two, two lots to the west of lot 12 is lot 10. It's a vacant lot. We're staging our, our equipment there at this point, our high lifts and different things, outdoor heavy equipment there, our scaffolding and different things, excess block, pallets of block. The only reason we're, we're asking for the indoor or the waiver for the fencing is because we have fencing and piping and gates and stuff we store that we don't want out there and opened.
Gotcha.
Somebody could drive up when no one's around and, and walk off with them. And the pipes are very expensive, you know, right now metals through the roof.
Definitely.
So we're trying to keep our, our eyes and keep it close to our, our work area. And then the soft materials like ceiling tiles and different things are stored in the buildings.
Okay, Mr., one second, Mr. Emeling. Mr. Long, you, you had a?
Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Miller, if you could put the page on after the resolutions in the packet, that, that does have a map of the various lots, so we can see what we're talking about here.
Which page in our packet is that?
Page 59.
59, oh, it's back a ways, that's why I didn't get to it.
I don't have that in my slideshow.
You did when you were, right there, go back.
This one right here?
Right there. Well, your, your map is different than the one that I have in my packet.
I think it's the next proposal that has that.
Oh, is that it? I'm in, am I in the?
Yeah, you strayed into the next.
Yeah, I'm in item three, correct.
I think the address is the 34413 is the.
There you go, that's it.
Okay, so 34413 is lot two?
Lot two, yes.
And 34422 is lot 12?
That's correct.
Okay, and we're looking, currently on the map that's on Mr. Miller's screen is lot 12. And you're saying that you would prefer to keep your, your items if it's going to be on the single lot, on lot two, which is the next petition that we have?
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm sure we qualify for outdoor storage for, for both spots, that if, if we wanted to and come to an agreement that we'd waive this one on lot 12 because I'm pretty certain the building's sold and we're going to start focusing all our efforts on lot two, that if I'm going to start spending money on fencing and, and blocking stuff in and trying to secure stuff, I'd rather focus the efforts on lot 12, especially this time of year. I can't put posts in the ground for a new fence that couldn't do it until the spring and we're going to be moving out of there in the spring. So this whole thing's kind of a moot point where there's, there's no point pressing it when I don't think. And then when we move out, then the city's going to be burdened with who's moving in and what are they going to store outside?
Right.
See, and I don't want to put that on the city either because then we don't know who's, what they're going to do once it's fenced in and they're allowed to store stuff outside. So I say leave it clear and open lot 12. Let's focus on two. And I hate to say I'm kind of wasting your time right now with this issue. That's why I'm trying to streamline it, get past it and see if we could, we'd just put lot 12 aside and just kind of void it out, if you will, and we'll focus on lot two and get the waiver for two. And that might be able to be the best way to go.
Understood, and like I said, we, these, these two petitions are very similar. The discussion is going to obviously cross over onto both of them. And as, for the benefit of the commissioners who were not at the study meeting, and I think also probably to reiterate what you're saying too, Mr. Emeling, is that one of the concerns raised at our study meeting was you're essentially looking to leapfrog this construction material from property to property to property as you develop. The concern that we have is that in doing so, that runs with the land and stays with that property. So once you move out with your construction activity and a tenant moves in, each tenant at each of these sites would have the ability to have a full construction or outdoor trade contractor's yard with whatever material they choose to put in it. And that's a concern that we have.
Sure, I understand. That's why I'm kind of.
So if we can get you narrowed down to one lot, it's certainly more preferable.
If, if you were, I think you, you picked a part of what I was saying. We're going to leapfrog in, in, in the continuance with that sentence that I said just shortly ago, that we're going to be hanging in on lot two. That's who we're going to focus on staying for the duration of the project, yes.
Okay.
And then that's going to be kind of be where we're going to home base everything there. We want it off the tracks. I want to secure the area for our small outdoor equipment and then we're going to stay on, on two. And then focus on doing the buildings and some of the lots have been sold since our last meeting. So things are, are moving around and things are, are changing every day. So if somebody comes up and offers us money to buy the rest of the lots, they're going to be sold and I'll be, be selling there and moving on to the next project.
Understood.
While we're there, we want to make sure that I, I don't do just what you just said and put a fence up on lot 12, I fight for it, I get it and I move out of there and then we don't know who's moving in there and, and what they're going to put in there. So I don't want to put that on the city, so.
Exactly, okay, good. Let's see if there's any questions from any of our commissioners for you and we'll, we'll see what we can do. Mr. Ventura?
Mr. Chairman, to your, to your comments. I recall that when we approved the accelerated towing recovery site, which is right at the western, extreme western end of this development, we made it very clear that there'd be no outside storage there and they agreed. So I'm reluctant to approve any outside storage in this location, but I understand what Mr. Emeling's saying. Is there, is there a way to limit the time that he can do this for the duration of the construction of this, of this park?
That question came up last.
And not make it transferable were he to sell the building and to limit it to him only. And if, if he sold the building, that the next owner would then come forward if he wanted to have this outside storage and get it re-approved by the planning commission. Is that, are those things possible?
That, that question did come up at the study meeting and Mr. Miller can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is this is a waiver use and waiver use is run with the property, not the petitioner. So we wouldn't be able to condition it for this, this user only. Is that correct, Mr. Miller?
I think that's, that's correct. I mean, unless he agrees to it, I, I'm not sure. I'm trying to think if we've ever done that before.
Well.
I mean, if he agrees and, and part of the condition is, yeah, I, I, it's, that would be, I don't know, that's kind of the law department to say.
Right.
But that would be a, be a putting a condition on the waiver use, which, you know, you, I don't know. I don't, I, that's kind of over. I, I would think he'd almost have to suggest that he could, that he would agree to that, I guess. You know, maybe he could do that.
Well, can I speak for one second?
One, one second, Mr. Emeling. Mr. Ventura?
I, I don't know what else we did ever did. I mean, we've done it like on massage parlors. We've always said that if they move out, that the council has to approve the new owner.
Well, that's been my experience.
Yeah.
And I thought, you know, why not something similar here?
But, but the outside storage, I mean, you're giving them the outside storage. I, I don't, I, yeah.
I understand.
I don't know.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd look to the petitioner to say, is this okay with you? I mean, you know, we're trying to solve your problem here for you and.
Yeah, the, the, what I spoke of earlier when I first started here, if we go to the, which we have to do anyway, is I just got notice of it today through, via email from the Engineering Department. We have to go and get a temporary construction easement. And that's something kind of what you're speaking of. That's going to be for the use of lot 10, just to use that as a construction easement for this, at this point. And while lot 10, the accelerated towing, while we're building that building as well. And I thought I heard you saying, I could be wrong, that there was no outside storage allowed at accelerated towing, but he is allowed to park his vehicles there, right? That's.
No. He told us there's no outside storage.
How do you run a tow yard without outside storage?
No outside storage vehicles there. That was specific.
I missed that at the meeting. We didn't, how is he going to run a tow yard or a tow company?
He only brings, he rarely brings a vehicle there. Vehicles go from where he picks them up to another location.
He doesn't use it as an impound yard or anything like that.
Okay, we'll have to make sure he's aware of that because I, I understood something completely different, that he was approved and we've got excavating everything.
Not approved for outside storage.
Okay, then we'll have to get him back and, and let him know. My understanding that it was all approved, but that's a whole nother subject, so let's stay focused here. The temporary construction easement is where we're going to be doing our staging and our outdoor stuff.
On lot 10.
On lot 10.
Right.
We can move our piping and stuff over there temporarily, tarp it or whatever we have to do. Then the wind blows it off, it looks shoddy. I don't like doing stuff like that. I like to keep things a little more in control and more together. But what you're, what you're asking is, we plan on, this is a three-year project at least. So I plan on being in that location three years plus because we don't have a, another spot, especially with this economy going, I don't have another location where I want to move my business to. So I'm going to stay there for, and I'm 60 now, I want to stay there until at least I'm 66 and getting ready for retirement. So I'm not going anywhere. So if I get the, if I get the waiver now, I'm asking, I'm not, we're not leapfrogging and just leaving that empty and, and leaving it, going to the next one in six months from now. I'm telling you, that's where I want to stay and that's why we're asking for the waiver for lot two. But again, we keep jumping from lot 12 to two, so we need to stay focused. I want to answer your question for lot 12. I'm asking that we move past 12 and get into two so we can focus on what I'm really, what we're really needing. And it is a waiver for lot two.
Thank you.
Mr. Long, did you have any comment you wanted to make?
I, well, yeah, but I think a lot of that's been answered. But so this is lot 12, item two here. So do we, should we table or deny number two here and then, and then get into item three so we can?
Well, what I've heard so far is it's, and I'll leave this up to the petitioner if he disagrees, but you're, you're pretty much saying that you are not interested in pursuing this contractor yard on lot 12 at this time.
That's exactly correct.
Which is the current petition before us. So it would seem appropriate that we would resolve this one and then move on to the next one to make sure our comments are attributed to the correct petition.
Because it basically is just withdrawing his request.
Exactly. So is, Mr. Miller, if we, is there, if he's going to withdraw his request, do we need to formally deny it or just?
I, I don't think so because if he, if he formally denied it, then, well, I guess somebody else could come. But I think he's just basically saying just like to withdraw it.
Right, which we've done for other petitioners who have come before us who have changed their mind on something. So I think if there's no objection from any of the other commissioners, through the direction of the chair, I think we can withdraw petition number, item number two on our agenda. And we'll mark that off our agenda for the time being. I don't hear any objections from anybody, so we'll do that. And we'll move on to item three. Mr. Secretary, did you want to quickly read that out for our record?
Yes. Petition 2021-11-02-24 submitted by RNA Landscape and Construction LLC, requesting waiver use approval pursuant to section 6.58 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance to construct and operate a special trade contractor's yard of 34413 Rosati Avenue located on the west side of Stark Road just south of the CSX Railroad in the southwest quarter of section 28.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Miller, there's no additional information. I believe you're going to say that other than the address, everything else is the same pretty much.
Well, the, the only thing is this is, he hasn't struck, it, it's a new construction. So that was, the other building was an existing building. I mean, this is a new construction. I mean, I could go into what it's going to be, but it's exactly like that was on lot 12. So I, I can go through it if you want me to.
You're welcome to. And I think, I think the one thing that's also important to note on this one is the fact that if this is the location for the special trade yard, that there would be landscape requirements as well because of the adjacency to residential, correct? Okay, so yeah, go ahead and let us.
Okay. This property is surrounded by industrial to the east, west and north. To the south, as we mentioned, it, it abuts residential, which is RUF. The plan shows, let me zoom in on here just to, the plan shows that it would, could be, construct a 6,167 square foot building. It would be located in the front, towards the front of the site. One of the problems is the setback for an M1 zoning is 50 feet. The building is only about 35 feet from the front yard setback. So therefore, you'd have to get a variance from the zoning board of appeals for a front yard setback. The floor plan is a general open floor plan. Basically, it basically shows a large shop area and office and then unisex bathrooms. Parking for this type of facility is required to have 12 parking spaces. It shows 12 along the west property line. One of the conditions of the, to have a special trade contractor's yard, as mentioned, other than the front yard, the site has to be enclosed by a fence. He's proposing to enclose the parking area and the area behind the building with a six-foot-high chain link fence. The building materials, similar to the other buildings in Rosati, it's going to be constructed out of brick and split-faced block. The front elevation and then the front half of the side elevations would be brick. The remaining portions of the building would be the split-faced block. The, another condition, as you mentioned, is that if it, if it abuts residential, and this property does, to the south, that he has to, has to incorporate a 20-foot-wide green belt between the residential properties. And he is showing that. And then that area has to be planted with two rows of appropriate trees. And he's showing two rows of trees along there, so it's, it's, it's conforming to the ordinance. Also, the front yard has to be landscaped and he's showing trees in the front yard. And then along the east property line, he has a, a green belt that, that would have trees in it. Lighting, he's showing pack lighting along the top of the building. These are light packs, LED light packs. There would be no light poles in the parking lot. And that is the extent of the proposal.
Okay, Mr. Miller, and correspondence is reasonably similar to the previous?
Yeah, I mean, I just, just kind of go, the treasurer office does have, does not have any objections. The finance department does not have any objections. The inspection department, no objection. The police department, no objection. The fire department is the same thing, no objections, except they would like a Knox box on the, to access the building. An additional key must be for the excess fence. And then the engineering department, same thing, it's no, no objections. That this site is currently, has access to public water main, sanitary sewer, stormwater sewer within the Rosati Avenue right-of-way. The developer would need to meet the current engineering requirements for the proposed project, including stormwater detention per the latest version of the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance. And that is the extent of the correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I didn't mean to steal your thunder and take away your presentation, it's always appreciated. Any questions, comments from any of our commissioners for our planning staff? If not, we'll kind of resume where we left off with Mr. Emeling. So here we are on the site that you would like to put your contractor yard. I think we've pretty much heard your reasoning for that. And is there any other questions from any of our commissioners specific to this site?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Carey Magno.
There was talk earlier about a temporary easement to allow.
There was talk earlier about a temporary easement to allow you to store your materials outside while the construction of the building takes place. Why can that not be used for this property?
Um, I, I, I'm not sure if I, if I understand it correctly. There's a temporary easement granted for the heavy equipment, our high lifts, our pallets of block, uh, stuff that can sit outside. It's not, nobody's going to walk up and pick it up and put it in their truck or drive off when nobody's around. As you noticed, the area is barely developed and it's, it's, uh, left alone, uh, majority of the time. The stuff that we're talking about is stuff that can be picked up and carried away. Piping and fence gates that are already pre-made and, 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 and ready for dumpster enclosures. Uh, pipe that we buy in bulk that's sitting on pallets, nice and orderly. They're not laying all over, crisscrossed all over the, the yard or leaning on the building or nothing. These are, uh, items that can be, you know, somebody that had any knowledge or, or desire could come up and, and, and get access to them and, and that's our fear. Uh, we have all our smaller stuff and light duty stuff in the buildings where, like I said, ceiling tires, our toilets that we buy in bulk, uh, different things for the different builds that we keep in the building. Um, and I hope, um, that kind of clears up your question. What are we doing with that little area that we want enclosed or fenced in? And I run a business, um, and I have none for 33 years in the city of Livonia. So we just want to, to protect, nothing against the city or nothing. It's just, there's, there's a dark, it's, it's a, it's a real lonely street at night and on the weekends. I mean, I might get three cars go by there and that's because of mitten automotive down the street. It's test driving, these cars going by down that street all, all day. So when it's left alone and, and as you know, when things are sitting idle like that, creepers come around at night and, and just look for stuff to take. And we just, we just want to protect what's ours and, and, uh, and I'm not asking for, um, to leapfrog, just waiver from building to building. We're going to stay put at this building because we like that spot of, of the whole development. So we're going to stay there and start developing around that.
But it seems that we've leapfrogged just in the last week from what you wanted to do to what you want to do now. So there, there is some leapfrogging going on. And from last week's study session, from what I understand is this wasn't even an, an item until the inspection department told, came and seen you and said, put your stuff away behind a fence. So until the inspection department came, this wasn't an issue of theft or outside storage. Is, is that right or did I miss hear that last week?
You, you, you misheard anything. I took on everything you've all said at the meeting into consideration. Took it home, slept on it, said, why am I going to do this? And I don't know which person made the point, uh, or the highlight of this issue that once I get the waiver for lot 12 and we, we don't know who's going to move in there next. I mean, I got a good idea who's buying my property, but what is he going to store outside? Do I want to burden the city with that? Because that doesn't feel right to me. I'm trying to do the right thing and I'm, I'm, I'm asking for waivers. I can drive all over this town and see people with outdoor storage and no fences around it. I'm not trying to be like that. I'm trying, here, I'm trying to follow the rules and do the right thing and I'm getting beat up for it. So I guess to answer your question is, no, I'm not leapfrogging and changing my ideas and changing. I took everything the board said last week. It says, let's, let's meet everybody halfway. Let's, let's cancel out lot 12. Why, why put that? Because I don't know who's going to move in and do what to it once I get the waiver. I fight for the waiver and I let somebody else reap the benefit. So I'm trying to back off on lot 12, focus my, my efforts on a building that I'm going to stay put in for the next six years. And that's going to be, I know what we're going to store out there. And I know we're backing up against, uh, residents. We got a six-foot wall there I just had all repaired because it's got graffiti all over it and everything from the years of people just, you know, beating it up and abusing it and kicking walls through it and driving their SUVs through there. So that's a whole nother story. I'm doing nothing but developing the neighborhood and making it better. If you go down it, down it, you'll see the whole, whole block wall, 200 foot of it just been repaired. I did it to upgrade the neighborhood and update the development. I'm not asking for anything online, but to walk the legal line and give me a, a waiver to do some outdoor storage of small equipment.
I, I wasn't, uh, what I heard last week was that you were going to stay on the, on the, on the building that backed up to the tracks. And then that's changed since last week, in, in a week's time. That's changed. So when I say leapfrogging, I understand things happen. Someone wants to buy that building now, so that deal's off the table. Now you're going to build a building across the street, backing up to the residential property, and you want to keep your building materials there. I understand. Until when? Until someone wants to buy that building?
No, that's been my goal to build over there. I don't want to be against the tracks. I don't like the noise. I don't like the vibration. I don't like anything about being backed up against the tracks. And I don't particularly need a building that backs up against the tracks, which is more desirable to a, a, a contractor or somebody else with a, with a, with a, with a small business like ours, where they can do and, and do more things outside, work a little later in their yard without interrupting the neighbors or do those. It's more desirable to be backed up against the tracks out there. So I don't need that. We had an opportunity to sell it. We've got a deal on the table. Nothing's 100% yet, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Emlyn, I just want to, uh, clarify, this is something that Mr. Karen Magna just asked and I, I don't know if I heard the answer clearly, but, um, you're looking to build out this particular lot and get the ability to store your materials in the yard, the fenced-in yard. I understand why.
Mm-hmm.
Are you looking to stay and keep ownership of this building during the construction of the rest of the, the development?
Yes.
So, so this is going to be your home base?
This is the layout. This is where I want to keep my building and this way, this one's a little bit bigger. So it's up against residential where we're more, we've got the block wall there instead of the noise with the, with the tracks. And I don't need, like I said, we're, we're looking to put this one here for our home base for the next six years. We'll develop around it.
And then once you're done, you would then put it on the market and sell it?
At that point, or at least a minimum of six years. I'm, I'm going until 66 and, and, and that's, that's it.
Understood.
God willing.
Definitely. All right, good. Thank you. Uh, any other questions from any of our commissioners? If not, there is no one else in our audience wishing to speak for or against this item, which I failed to mention at the last petition as well. Uh, if there is no other questions for our petitioner, then a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Long.
I'm going to, uh, offer up an approving resolution, um, that the request to construct and operate a special trade contractor's yard at 34413, am I on the right one? 34413 Rosati Avenue is hereby approved, subject to city council approval on the following conditions. Number one, the architectural site plan identified as sheet number DA 1.0 dated November 15th, 2021, prepared by Arista Design Incorporated is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, subject to a determination by the inspection department. The petitioner may be required to obtain a variance from the zoning board of appeals for deficient building, front yard setback and any conditions related thereto. Number three, all parking spaces except the required handicap spaces shall be double striped to 10 feet wide by 20 feet in length as required. Number four, the landscape plan identified as sheet number L 1.0 dated December 16th, 2021, as revised, prepared by Arista Design Incorporated is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number five, that the proposed white dogwood trees within the 20-foot-wide green belt along the rear property line shall be replaced with full-size evergreen-type trees, subject to the review and approval of the planning department. Number six, that all disturbed lawn areas shall be sodded in lieu of hydro seeding. Number seven, that underground sprinklers are to be provided for all landscaped and sodded areas and all planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the inspection department and thereafter permanently maintained in a legal, in a healthy condition. Number eight, that the exterior elevations plan identified as sheet number DA 1.0 dated November 15th, 2021, prepared by Arista Design Incorporated is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number nine, that all rooftop mechanical equipment shall be concealed from public view on all sides by screening that shall be of a compatible character, material and color to other exterior materials on the building. Number 10, that all outside storage shall be restricted to the enclosed fenced-in area behind the building as shown on the approved site plan. Storage within this area shall be limited to construction-related materials and no more than two vehicles. Any changes in the location and extent of the outdoor storage yard shall first be approved by the planning commission. Number 11, that there shall be no outdoor storage of junk, tires, debris, hazardous chemicals or disabled slash inoperative equipment and vehicles anywhere on the premises. That the owner, number 12, that the owner must provide a knox box, fire department key box for fire department access after our access to the building. Additionally, a key must be provided in the knox box for access to all fenced-in areas as well. Number 13, that any pole-mounted light fixtures shall not exceed 20 feet in height and shall be aimed and shielded to minimize stray light trespassing across property lines and glaring into adjacent roadways. Number 14, that the trash dumpster area and enclosure gates shall be constructed in accordance with the dumpster enclosure details as shown on the approved site plan. Number 15, that only conforming signage is approved with this petition and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. Number 16, that the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time the building permits are applied for. Number 17, pursuant to section 13.13 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by city council. And unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period. And I'd like to add in, number 18, that, um, that requests the law department and city council to, uh, consider how to make this approval valid to this petitioner only if possible.
Okay, I think that's a, a fair statement. I, I believe that accurately encompasses the discussion that we've had to make this conditioned to this user only if, if that's a possibility.
If that's a possibility. That's beyond our scope and so let's get it to the people who know.
Yep, it can be looked at by the law department and, uh, followed up with the city council. And if, if that's possible, then they can include that in their approving, uh, motion if they want to make that. Uh, is there support for this motion?
I'll support that.
All right, we have a motion to approve provided by Mr. Long, supported by Mr. Ventura. I'd be really mean to Mr. Long if I told him he was reading the wrong one the whole time.
Would have been, I would have just said what I just said, change the address.
I wouldn't have done that to you. Uh, is there any discussion on that, uh, motion? If not, if the secretary's ready, please call a roll.
Uh, Mr. Long.
Well, I got to vote yes after I read all that. Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Vote aye.
Okay. You're next, Sam.
Karen, yeah, Karen Magna, Karen Magna votes, uh, votes aye. Chairman will show.
Votes aye as well. Motion passes. We'll go to city council with an approving recommendation. And good luck on your development. I'm glad that you're working on it.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Good night.
Thank you. Have a good night.
God bless.
That takes care of the public hearing section of our agenda tonight. Uh, we now move on to miscellaneous items. And item number four, uh, on our agenda is a petition that has been, uh, tabled to a future, uh, date of February 8th. This is petition 2021-11-08-06, uh, which is for the Concord Plaza. If anybody watching is interested in that, this item will be moved on to February 8th, uh, meeting of 2022. So, uh, that was at the request of the petitioner. So that takes us to the last item on our agenda. Mr. Secretary?
That is the approval of the minutes of the 1,180th public hearing, regular meeting held by the planning commission on December 14th, 2021.
No, uh, Mr. Long was absent for that meeting, so that leaves us with three people to approve those minutes, which I.
I'll, I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Ventura. Do we have a, if, if we only have three votes to approve it, that doesn't constitute a quorum. Uh, I think it would.
I know it's not a quorum.
I think it would be safe to just, uh, move this to, uh, the next agenda and we'll approve the minutes from that meeting and then this one at our next, uh, regular agenda, so.
So are we tabling it?
We're essentially tabling the minutes or moving them to the next agenda because of lack of quorum. So if that, everybody's okay with that, there's no objections, we'll do that at the direction of the chair. Uh, that takes us to the end of our agenda. There's nothing else before us. Uh, any other business to prove, um, for anybody to prove, uh, I'm losing my, my words here now. So it's been a long night. Uh, any other business to bring before the, uh, planning commission this evening? If not, uh, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Ventura, supported by Mr. Long, to adjourn. Uh, if there's no objection, I think we can safely show four on that. And that will conclude our meeting this evening. Uh, I want to thank Livonia Television staff for their contribution in bringing this meeting to the community. And, uh, with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 9:06 PM and wish a good night to the city of Livonia. Good night.